Good evening, everyone. So, one of the things I want to say in acknowledging this environment that we're in, if you close your eyes and listen very carefully, you will hear water running. That water is running off of the roof, I suspect. It is dissimulated sound of the waterfall. So if you all were able to go on the trip, you will know what I'm talking about. Thank you all for being here and joining us in this meeting. Before we get started, in keeping with the proper rules, I will ask our clerk to call the roll. But before I do that, I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. This is a very important beginning of a process that we believe will help us to find a better way to improve our city and make it the best downtown that we can make it. So that's the focus of us being here today. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President?
President?
Here?
Here.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, what I want to do now is to ask everyone that is seated around the table to identify themselves. Just let everyone know who you are and the role that you play in the city, and then from there, we'll begin with the opening statement, and we'll start the process. Is that okay with everyone? Thank you very much. Well, you guys are a subdued crowd tonight, but in any event, let's get started. And we'll start with Peter.
Good evening. Peter Glagola, I'm with Marketing and Communications with the City of Portsmouth.
Evening, everyone. Jay Grant, Housing Consultant with Progressive Housing Solutions.
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Wren, Executive Director of the Portsmouth Partnership.
Good evening. Alisa Winston, the Executive Director for Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
I'm Neil Barber, Vice Chairman for the Economic Development Authority.
Good evening. Liz Pasquale, Assistant Director, Portsmouth Partnership.
Good evening. Kitty Bryant, Portsmouth City Council.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Bill Moody with Portsmouth City Council.
Stephen Corbey.
Shennan Glover, Mayor of City of Portsmouth.
Councilman Mark.
Not subdued tonight. I'm excited to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Bill Dodson.
Councilwoman Yolanda Thomas.
Brian Donahue, Director of Economic Development.
Malcolm Mitchell, Chair, Economic Development Authority.
Anthony Brown, EDA Board Member.
Teresa Saunders-Smith, Treasurer, Economic Development Authority.
Thank you all for those introductions. So let us begin. I want to also acknowledge our marketing team that's here with us today, the great work that you all did, and acknowledge, of course, our city clerk, Ms. White and her staff, and all the folks from our city who put this thing together. I know this wasn't ideal situations outside today, but at the end of the day, the show must go on. I am excited about being here for a number of reasons. When we had this discussion about making Portsmouth the best downtown that we can make it, I was introduced to this place called Greenville, South Carolina, and someone told me to look up Greenville, and it caused me to order some books. And as I ordered those books, it really gave me an opportunity to realize what an amazing downtown could look like. Before I get to why Greenville and then move on with bringing up Councilman Hugo, one of the things I've always believed as a leader and as a person, and I've learned through listening to different motivational speakers and people that have overcome challenges, one of my favorites is Earl Nightingale. Anybody ever heard of Earl Nightingale? Well, if you heard of Earl Nightingale, Earl Nightingale had a saying. He said, "You know what the greatest secret is in the world? Do y'all know what the greatest secret is?" Well, Earl Nightingale said, "The greatest secret is we become what we think about." Again, we become what we think about. So, listening to that and understanding that and thinking, how does that fit into the vision of what we desire Portsmouth to be? Our city, our hometown, our community? I submit to you, the purpose of us coming here today is to change our thinking. But not just in a simple way, to really think about how do we become the best downtown in America? And I mean that sincerely. I spent a lot of time in the city, walking up and down the streets, and I can tell you, we're not very far away. So how did Greenville do it? We had some takeaways. We had some lessons. First of all, I will tell you, it was not an easy feat. But Greenville downtown was much like Portsmouth downtown. In the 60s, they saw flight, they saw businesses leave, and their downtown essentially became a ghost town, much like Portsmouth. Many of you in this room remember the vibrant days of downtown Portsmouth. Can I see some hands? I heard that Portsmouth was the shopping mecca, the business mecca in the area. A lot of people flocked to Portsmouth. So we know what happened. The malls came online, people left downtown for greener pastures. But now we see this reimagining, this reinvention of downtowns all across the country. Folks are trying to figure it out. That is why I recommended that we take a team down to Greenville, South Carolina, because not only did they figure it out, but they had a plan and a commitment from the community, from the business leaders. And by the way, it wasn't all everybody on board. Everything didn't work well. There were challenges along the way, but at the end of the day, their vision kept them focused on the end result. What we saw there gives me not only hope for Portsmouth, but gives me the understanding that what we're doing today are putting us in position to get there as well. So with that, I just want you to know that we're committed to making our city better. This team is committed, and we are willing to do everything that is within our control. Our manager understands the mission. We understand the mission, but we want you to understand the mission and buy into that mission. That's why we invited you here to share that message. And before I close and sit down, I want to share something with you that came out of the book, Reimagining Greenville: Building the Best Downtown in America. This is what the mayor of Greenville had to say, Knox White, who, by the way, has been the mayor for over 30 years. Now, I'm not suggesting that I'd be the mayor for 30 years or more to make this dream a reality, but what I do know is consistency matters. Consistency in leadership, consistency in collaboration, consistency in vision, consistency in support. This is what he had to say in the book. He said, "We have created a different model for what a downtown can look like. A business district with office towers, but on the street level. A walkable village. It's all focused on people, the pedestrian. We have big anchor projects that helped, such as the Hyatt, the Peace Center, Falls Park, and the baseball stadium. But in between, there is a lively street of retailers, restaurants, and public art. It all comes together to create an amazing downtown. If it looks easy, it is not. Many of the most successful pieces were the product of an immense amount of hard work and effort, and in some cases, major controversy. But in the end, we had a plan, and we stuck to it." Thank you all, and now I'll return the mic over to my colleague, Councilman Hugo.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Evening, everybody. I really am excited to be here tonight. So, our purpose tonight is to accomplish a couple of things. First off, there are some folks sitting around the table who did not get a chance to travel with us, and so part of why we're here tonight is to offer an opportunity for those who did travel to share with those who didn't, so that everybody's working kind of from the same baseline for what we saw in Greenville. And so, this next section, we titled Reflections. It's not going to be a lot of my reflections, it's mostly going to be your reflections. So for those of you who traveled, I asked the clerk to put a piece of paper at your spot, and that piece of paper has five headings on it. Those are the five headings that we're going to reflect upon tonight. Housing, aesthetics, destinations and anchors, retail, and community perceptions. I would ask you, those of you who traveled with us, to take time as we roll through the slideshow, because Peter Glagola has done a great job in assembling a collection of pictures from the trip as kind of a way of stimulating your memories. So as we run through the pictures, I would ask you to use this piece of paper to make notes. And I would also ask you, at the end of the evening, to provide those pieces of paper to me, so that we can collect your thoughts, not just in the video, but have them written down, so as we move forward, we've got the benefit of all these great minds sitting around the table. So, we're going to reflect. The group that planned the event this evening did spend some time reflecting together, and that's what led us to these five groupings of ideas. And so before we get into that, I'm going to tag team with Peter, and we're going to run through the pictures that are in the slideshow. So I'm going to make some work for the AV guys and get up. Peter, if you'll join me over at the screen, and we'll talk about what we saw in Greenville. So first off, this is the collection of folks who participated that day. I think there were 19 of us, and this is after we met in the morning with the Greenville City Manager, who took more than an hour of her morning out to spend with us and to share some thoughts. I think maybe mostly for our city manager to take away some of the intricacies of what being the city manager in the middle of this might mean.
I'm blocking people's view.
Next.
I will stand up when needed.
Okay, Peter, so history. So this photo wasn't taken when we were on the trip, but this is what Greenville looked like in the 60s and 70s, 1960s, 1970s. So we just wanted to say, okay, this is what it looked like. The next was, all right, they're taking their city and, oops, sorry, again. How's that? All right. So this was beginning of the infrastructure changes. Everything that needed to go into the streets, to go from four-lane highways with parallel parking to two lanes, eight-foot sidewalks, and then back end or front end parking. So, thank you. Those photos were, that photo of the mayor staying in the street was taken late 1990s or early 2000s, so. This one's a little bit harder to see, but this is Greenville now at night from a rooftop that we gained access to. It is facing the city, and you can see, you know, the light, the trees, the buildings on, you know, kind of this overview of the city itself. So go to the, this is one of the hotels, and this is a very historic hotel. You have the, I mean... Yes. Can you talk a little bit about that one? Yeah, so this is the Point Set Hotel, 100-year-old hotel in downtown, right along their main street. When the city started their rejuvenation plan, the original intent was to bulldoze this hotel. And some of the city leaders got together and said, "Well, wait a minute. Before we bulldoze our history, let's see if we can find a developer that maybe will work with us to rejuvenate." And so it turns out, that 100-year hotel is the place that we stayed while we were down there. It's nicely appointed on the inside and a wonderful addition to the streetscape from the outside. And here you see the streetscape, and this is what, frankly, what we hope our streetscape could look like. So one of the things that we heard from the city manager, as they're planning each of their blocks, they hire a landscape architect. And so, back up slide, please. Stay on the streetscape. There we go. So, a couple of things to take away. You'll note that there are no medians down the middle of their main street. Instead, they've widened the sidewalks, they use diagonal parking, so they take advantage of the space that they have, and there's landscaping along every curb. And all of this is well thought out and planned out, and this is the way it looked the day that we visited. Feels very green, very homey, very comfortable and welcoming. And in fact, the thing that we saw both evenings while we were there were folks out strolling on the sidewalks, strolling, okay? Folks my age holding hands with their significant others and just enjoying a walk along their main street. And it's this kind of atmosphere that they managed to put in place because of the landscaping, the trees that have made their main street feel homey. This was also one of their oldest buildings. Go back to the building real quick. So the top is apartments, bottom again is retail, and this is where a coffee shop was created. So there used to be a lady that served coffee in a cart, and, you know, through partnerships with the city, et cetera, or other business owners, she started her coffee shop into the basement of this. It's very small but down under, but it is a really, really unique location to go. So this is an example of a building that was in the city for a very long time. I believe the apartments are pretty high-dollar now to rent. And important to point out that when we spoke with the mayor, so this picture was taken while we were on our walk, our hour-long walk with Mayor White. Our mayor asked Mayor White, "So how did you get this started?" And we stood in front of this building, and the mayor pointed actually to this building and said, "This is the starting place. We found a developer who looked at this old, worn-out building and saw what it could be." And one of the things that that developer did was turn the upstairs into residential. So this was some of their very first mixed use along their main street. And the mayor shared with us that they learned that mixed use was the key to getting more people into downtown who were then available to participate in the retail, who were there to enjoy the restaurants and to stroll in the evenings. So this looks a whole lot like what our main street is ready to be. Just another picture of the attributes of the city. I think the gentleman in the middle is our mayor, but you can see signage, lighting, streetways, greenery. Another one of the older buildings that they have repurposed. Lot of café seating in front of all of the restaurants. Again, restaurant, street view, trees, flowers. This was another restaurant in there. So just the way the buildings are looking, this was part of our walk. Go ahead. The reason this picture is, as you notice, if you're looking down the street, the signs are not flat against the building, perpendicular. So if you're looking down the road, you can see where the store is you're trying to find. So it's a different use of wayfinding, you know? It's not flat to the building. All right, go ahead. Again, parking. This was one of the buildings, office building, and homes in the downtown area, so, you know, street views. Again, this is supposed to, you know, kind of cue our synapses, so that we can reflect also. Again, another street view of, you know, use of rocks, parking, all right. All right, this is the mayor. Mayors, these are two mayors. When we first met, our grouping, keep going, you can keep going. One more, and one, and again, go backwards. You again see, you know, the stores, the signage there, and the mayor, I mean, you love the, I always forget the name of the store, the store that we went into, like, this is Mass General, you know? That they were able to pull in these really big-name stores into the city. Yeah, so we actually stopped at this point in our walk with the mayor. The gent in the yellow vest was out pressure washing the sidewalks and the diagonal parking along that entire block. So they have a schedule to take care of their downtown that involves trash pickup at 4:00 every morning and a regular schedule to come through and pressure wash the whole downtown strip, sidewalks and parking areas. And one of our takeaways, and the reason that we actually stopped and chatted with him, the mayor White was sharing with the guy who was doing the pressure washing, that he had recently visited New Orleans and learned from the mayor of New Orleans that, who also does pressure washing along Bourbon Street. Apparently, New Orleans now adds some kind of scent into their pressure washer, so not only does it look great, but it smells great. And so the mayor was sharing with our pressure washing public servant here that story, and his eyes lit up with the opportunity to not only make their main street look great, but make it smell great. And again, you see residential above the retail on the ground floor. And you might wonder, so where do the people who live in those places park? They're not the cars that you see parked in front of the buildings. They have built into their plan parking garages that are a block or two either side of their main street to provide parking for the residents who live along their main street. In fact, they have a couple of parking garages that they have built to be mixed use. So the ground floor of the parking garage is commercial, and parking above the parking garage that's not only there for the commercial on the ground floor, but also for residents who live nearby. So, yeah, Falls Park along the Reedy. Reedy is the river that runs through the middle of Greenville. And here's the Reedy River. So the mayor shared with us while we were walking that when they started this project, their waterfall was hidden by a highway bridge. And it was quite a controversial discussion to make the decision ultimately to knock down the highway bridge, route the traffic differently, and open up the falls to become an anchor point and an attraction in their downtown. And so it has become that all along the river, both sides of the river. There were walking trails, bicycle trails, landscaping. Again, in the evenings, people out strolling along the river, enjoying the scenery, and just out for a nice evening. So this is another of the anchor points in their downtown. Floor Field is the name of their baseball stadium. Their baseball team, I think, is Class A for the Boston Red Sox. When they decided that they needed to renovate their baseball stadium to try to keep a baseball team in town, they went to the Red Sox and convinced the Red Sox to help them build something that looks a little like Fenway Park. So you see the big green monster there in their left field, but behind the big green monster is residence. And so they managed, again, to do a mixed-use thing with an attraction, the baseball stadium. And the mayor shared with us, you know, folks generally don't go to the baseball stadium to watch great baseball. They go to the baseball stadium for an evening out with their family and a hot dog in a way to enjoy the evening. And so the baseball stadium has become one of the anchor points in their downtown. So, public art is a big deal in Greenville. It was everywhere. There were statues, bronze statues of large and small. There were bronze plates built into the sidewalk with quotable quotes that would trigger you as you're out for your evening stroll, if you've not seen them before, to stop and read the quotable quotes and see what's happening there in Greenville, or maybe what happened in Greenville along that spot. They also have commissioned different artists to do different pieces throughout the city. So, this little mouse, what they also have, these are all over the city. They are about, I'd say, three inches tall, and they're part of a scavenger hunt for tourists and kids to go through the city and find where all these mice are throughout the city. So, you know, it gives your tourists something to do when they're walking the streets as well, at least the kids. Yeah, so in the afternoon, a couple of their city council folks made time to meet with us. I think the quotable quote that I took away from the city council folks that spoke with us was, "Don't be afraid to go big." And so their encouragement to us, "If you want to have the kind of success that we had, you need a plan, you need to stick to the plan, but don't be afraid to go big." And the mayor with their city manager, again, she took a little more than an hour in the morning to sit and chat with us about a lot of the things that they have done in Greenville. Now, there are things about Greenville that don't necessarily parallel our story. For instance, Greenville's the only city within 30 miles. Greenville's about 78, 79,000 people who live there, but during the workday, their population swells to double that. So their traffic in the morning is inbound into the city, because that's where business is conducted in the area. And the other industries in the area, big industries, manufacturing industries, they have a BMW plant, they have a Michelin plant, and they announced while we were there that they were about to land in a Suzu plant. Those are all in Greenville County, which surround Greenville, and they have the land, the space to be able to attract businesses like that. We talked now about workforce development, about the need to have a workforce to staff those kind of manufacturing places, and what they shared with us was, when their crisis started, it started because they were a tobacco town and a textile town, and both of those industries imploded, and they needed to find something else to get their people busy working at. And it was around that time that BMW was looking for a landing place, and Michelin was looking for a landing place, and so they repurposed, retrained their textile and tobacco factory workers into the skills necessary to staff the BMW and Michelin plants. And so, again, a little bit different story than we have, but, you know, we have a maritime economy, and they're a long way from the ocean. So there are things that we have that they don't have that are potentials for us to at least copy, leverage some of the ideas that we saw them put in place. Okay, I think that's the end of the picture show. So what we're going to do... So, what we're gonna do now is, uh, audience participation. Those of you who went on the trip, uh, you've had a little bit of time with that piece of paper sitting in front of you. So, the first area that we're gonna reflect upon is housing. So, uh, I mentioned during the slideshow, one of the things we saw was, uh, their goal was to get people moved into their downtown by doing mixed use and putting residential above their shops. Uh, one of the other things that the city manager shared with us, uh, as they do new development, uh, they build in a twenty percent expectation, incentive expectation for the developers to include workforce housing as part of any housing development. Uh, someone asked the city manager the question, uh, so, so what about your unhoused? Is, is that a, a problem for Greenville or not? And the city manager, as I recall, said, "In fact, that's probably our biggest problem." And it was a big enough problem that, uh, they decided to put together the Greenville Housing Fund uh, and, uh, and use that fund as, uh, the corpus to, to land housing developers and, and to, uh, to encourage them, uh, to, uh, to come in and build housing. Uh, additionally, uh, she told us that public-private partnerships were critically important to their success. Uh, we think of, at least I think of, public-private partnerships, uh, requiring millions of dollars. Uh, she suggested that, uh, a few hundred thousand sprinkled here and there was sometimes the difference between attracting a developer or missing out on a developer who takes, uh, takes their development in a different direction. So, those are some of the, uh, takeaways that the planning team had regarding housing. And now, I'll open the floor to those of you who, uh, who participated to share any other, uh, housing ideas that you may have, uh, reflected on.
So, if you want the floor or wanna make a comment, just raise your hand and we'll call you. Anyone wanna make any comments? Mr. Brown, sir, you have the floor.
I did a, a no, uh, quite a bit of walking in Greensville, day and night, walking the street, walking and, uh, there was a, a great deal of, um, noticeable mixed-use housing. Whether the, whether the first floor was, um, retail or like law office or dental office or medical office, you could always see some type of residential im- im- implant upstairs of it. The most noticeable one was the one that he showed us being the anchor point, where the mayor told us that the building actually sold for three hundred thousand dollars. Unbeknownst to the, to the owner, the buyer, the builder had a basement in it. Became one of the first coffee shops in the East Coast, before, long before Starbucks. But more impressive than that is upstairs, there were five units that he turned into condos and were eventually, was eventually able to sell those condos for a million dollars each, off of three hundred thousand dollar investment. That's because by the time that transaction transpired, Greensville had started attracting more people into the downtown area. It was the catalyst for to draw more people in, one of the catalysts to draw more people in. So, that was very noticeable with the mixed-use housing.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Mr. Grant.
Yes, um, along those lines, I would say what stood out to me is just, uh, something very basic that housing, uh, and Mayor Knox said this, housing is at the core of all of the vibrancy. And so, they took what, you know, was really the most, uh, undervalued, underutilized area of the city, going all the way down to, to the river there. You know, they said that was, um, that was a place where, you know, um, uh, drug use, heavy drug use was happening, prostitution, everything of that nature, going back a couple decades or so. And now, it's the most vibrant place. But all around there, um, Mayor Knox just continued to, you know, hone in on housing, housing, housing. Um, getting those, uh, you're getting, you're getting feet on the ground. Uh, you know, and we're talking not just on the weekend, but this is twenty-four seven, seven days, seven days a week.
Thank you. Ms. Teresa, ma'am.
I just. Adding housing. In other words, we saw a seven or eight-story garage and as a, and part of that garage also included a housing development that was attached to the garage. That was a part of that particular contract. So, they really co- uh, coined on on using mixed use.
Ms. Winston, ma'am, you have the floor.
So, for me.
Can you hear me okay?
For me, I think, you know, the investment that the city made in housing through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think it was ten million dollars, um, that was stated that they poured into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Also, understanding that economic development and housing go hand in hand. You can't have economic growth without having housing for the folks that are working there, that are living there, that are shopping there. So, um, as everyone has stated, that is a big priority for them. And also, just creating housing for all income levels, um, is very important. So, we need to have a mixed use of income in our downtown area. And the landscaping, um, surrounding the housing was very important. Um, it, the streets were just really immaculate and clean. Um, they, they really poured into that and that was very impressive to me. And they worked very closely with the housing authority as well.
Ms. Redd.
The, well, the comment that I was gonna make too was, what Elisa said, was the mixed use. So, um, all types of housing, not just one, but you had ownership in condos and, you know, um, like Mr. Brown said, million-dollar condo next to, um, a, a beautiful apartment complex. So, you had somebody that was renting, um, an apartment and living in a really nice space and then somebody who owned a million-dollar condo living right next door to each other. And I think that, um, mixed use, um, and having that investment in the city is really important. You need ownership in the city, not just rental, because when you own something, you sometimes treat it differently and then the outside and the aesthetics are a little bit different. But that mixed in with the rental brings everything up. So, again, going back to what Ms. Winston said is that, that mixed use piece. And then I liked the workforce housing in there. So, um, all income levels, everybody living together, a diverse community. But everything was aesthetically beautiful because it was up to the million-dollar level, whether you were paying the million dollars or not.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian.
Couple of thoughts. Um, first, you know, mixed use was very prevalent throughout the city. Um, I appreciated the density that existed. It looked like, uh, they made a very concerted effort to ensure that they were utilizing their properties to, uh, construct as dense of a community as possible. Um, but it blended very well with the historic, uh, neighborhood surrounding, uh, the new development. The other thought, which is, is, I think, housing-related, but from a, a short-term housing standpoint, is hospitality. Uh, their hotel industry was thriving. Um, I believe that it was maybe ten years ago, they had eight hundred hotel rooms. Today, they have twenty-four hundred and I think there's over a thousand in the development pipeline, if I recall correctly. So, they've really created a destination for visitors and accommodations to, uh, allow for them to stay a few nights, whether they're traveling through the area or if it's a primary destination. Um, you have a lot of outside visitors, which brings outside money and investment into the community. And it looked like there was a concerted effort to attract new hotels to Greenville. I think the Point Set Hotel being the, the premier example of that. The incentives that were put into that project, the support that the hotel developer was provided to bring that to fruition. Um, I think you now see, uh, what that has resulted in with all of the other private developers falling suit. I mean, there were hotels everywhere and from mid-priced hotels to high-end, you know, the Grand Bohemian, which, you know, I'm not sure I could ever afford a room there, uh, but it was nice to spend some time in the lobby. Um, you know, it's pretty unique what offerings they had and, um, it looked as though people were making the hotels a destination on their own. I think we may have seen a, uh, you know, wedding parties, a bachelorette party visiting. Uh, those are the types of things that cities like Greenville, Nashville can attract because they've created this opportunity to travel and stay and make it a destination, make it a weekend trip. So, that was pretty impressive. Um, I think that's something we could aspire to.
Thank you, sir. And I wanna acknowledge, um, um, Dr. Russell, if you would just introduce yourself so that everybody knows who you are, 'cause you weren't at the table when I asked everybody to introduce themselves initially. Thank you, Dr. Russell. Any other observations? Okay, let's move along.
Okay, so, uh, second area that we're gonna, uh, reflect upon is, uh, the aesthetics. Uh, so, in the picture show, uh, we, we spent time talking about the wide sidewalks, the lighting, the signage, the, uh, public art, the landscaping. All, all of that worked together really, really well to, to cause their main street to be, uh, a place where people wanted to go strolling in the evenings. Uh, so, those are the thoughts that the planning group, uh, pulled together. Uh, and now, over to you all, what else did you see that we haven't talked about?
There was a lot of outdoor eating space, you know, that was very impressive. And they were dog-friendly and so, most of the businesses had dog bowls outside of their business. But I didn't see dog, dog poop anywhere, so, you know, it was very clean. And so, you had, um, seniors or senior, um, persons and, and young families that were walking the streets and young children. So, you ha- you had all age groups.
Mr. Harmon, go ahead, sir.
So, um, the entire area was very green and well-manicured. Um, if you looked at their main street corridor, they embraced the old while reflecting new modern amenities. So, they didn't bulldoze everything, they actually took what they had in many cases to see if it was salvageable and they reimagined it. Um, sim- similar to what we're doing in Old Town, um, where we have that dynamic already. It's just putting the right puzzle pieces in place to make it happen. Um, the signage was aesthetically pleasing. There was directions, you knew where parking was, you knew where all the shopping was. Um, every block, they had a listing of the shops within that block. And what was very innovative about that was that it was removable. So, if something left, they were able to do another sign to replace it. So, you have to replace the entire sign. Those are very thoughtful touches that they have obviously thought about. And someone has been on a team or a committee that has really thought about the overall aesthetic of that entire, entire city. Um, their brick walkways, so we mentioned that they didn't have a median. And if, many of you that are natives of Portsmouth, High Street did not always have a median. It used to be a electric rail line that ran in the median in Old Town. We replaced it with a median in the nineties as a concept to bring about an Old Town feel, okay? So, we want to reimagine that even in the purpose, you know, of why we went to Greenville. But the problem with ours is that it's not accessible within each block. In Greenville, within each block, from street to street, there were bricked pathways to go across the street. Um, within that, all of the shrubbery was all corralled with wrought iron fencing. So, it was very well-maintained and contained. Um, mulch, it was rubberized mulch, it wasn't your regular mulch. So, people would step on it and nothing happened. It was to simulate the look of mulch. But these are very thoughtful touches that they had. Um, similar from the pictures that we saw, all the signage was visible from both sides of the street, whether you're going to or fro. Um, there wasn't onto the building where you have to actually turn your head to see what the, um, restaurant or shop is. They were able to use public art as a talking piece per block. There was something different to talk about each block. Um, we saw the little mice, the, the puzzle they had for tourists to look for. Every block had a different, um, a different reflection, um, or a monument or a statue or something to show about the old and how they've used that to bring it to the modern age. Um, one thing in particular, they had a monument of one of their first African-American high schools. And it was a talking piece for that block. We have an historically black high school right on High Street, IC Norcom High School. That could be another talking point to reflect the history of where we are and where we're headed. Especially with the Lynx District, which is, you know, an ode to Lincolnville, which IC Norcom lived in. So, these are things that they had in place, but we have even more, it's just buying into that.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody.
Speaking of the, speaking of the beautification, it was so important to them that early on, they hired a, a landscaping architect to make sure everything was uniform, which it was. The, the other thing, and I put this under aesthetics and safety, is the lighting. At, at nighttime, the, the lighting wa- was really fantastic. And, uh, a strange thing happened when it got dark. The tre- sidewalk traffic actually increased. You saw lots of, uh, of families and, uh, young folks, old folks, uh, walking the sidewalks. Uh, so, uh, I was simply amazed at that. Uh, you, you know, when the sun went down, the people didn't go, the people came to town. And, and the shops were open. They di- they didn't close up when it got dark. They remained open, probably because there were a lot of people on the streets, on the sidewalks. So, that, that was really impressive. And Joe, speaking of the, uh, uh, different statues and things, uh, somebody pointed out Ruth Brown was quoted on, on one of them. Imagine that, uh, from Portsmouth to Greenville, uh, you run into a quote from a, uh, one, one of our, uh, uh, folks. So, that, that, that part of it was extremely impressive. The streets were, were spotless, they, they really were. You, you didn't s- you didn't see a lot of, didn't see any, I didn't see any trash on the streets. People didn't, uh, toss their fast food, uh, lunch out of the window. You didn't see any of that, uh, none. So, I, I was extremely in- impressed with that. But, at, at one of the, um, meetings we had with their, um, city manager, I asked the question, I said, uh, "Do y'all have any problems with homelessness?" And actually, they do. And, and I think that's true of every city. And, in fact, when we were walking with the mayor, uh, uh, we, we did see, uh, a, a guy asleep in one of the, uh, entrances to the, uh, businesses there. So, you know, they have their challenges, uh, but, uh, overall, the aesthetics of the city, uh, are extremely impressive.
Liz.
So, I'll just add, as you're, uh, walking along the sidewalk, there were continual places to just stop and sit and spend time and enjoy. So, whether it was like steps going up to a monument or, um, a statue or there were just little kinda cutouts or bumpouts from the sidewalk that had a couple of benches. It just, it was a constant reminder to kinda slow down, stroll, and you felt very welcome to spend time, um, along their, their main street corridor.
And, and real quick, one of the things I wanted to say about, you know, from, from my, my viewpoint, what I saw, one of the approaches with Greenville in terms of their downtown is to make their downtown everyone's downtown. The downtown belongs to everyone. It's not this divisive or division that it's Old Town or this side of town and you focus more on one area versus another. The truth of the matter is, I would, I would argue that their downtown is a big part of their success. So, if we want our gateway to be a part of our success, we have to focus on our downtown as well. So, once again, their approach was, let's make downtown everyone's neighborhood. The other thing that I saw that I thought was really unique, they had ambassadors that was walking downtown, random people. And, I mean, they would, if you asked them a question, they could tell you where things were. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, we, we don't have that, we do have some of that. But having a intentional focused area of getting people to buy into that. And I'll give you a good example of what we're doing in Portsmouth right now, just so you know. We have Government 101 and I think that's a great precursor. That's a place where we can start to educate our citizens and be, and have them become ambassadors. When I made my comments to them last night, I made sure that I said, "Part of your reason for being here is we want you to be a better ambassador for the city of Portsmouth." So, those are some takeaways that I had. Ms. Teresa, ma'am.
Well, I was gonna say almost exactly what you said about the ambassador program. I went into some stores and, uh- I went into some stores, and the persons who worked in the stores could tell me a whole lot about the city, the history about the city, and they told me that they had actually hired a company that, I guess they became a part of that city, but all the employees who worked in the downtown area actually went through a program that taught them all these things about their city. And so, they were very, just very knowledgeable, and just, it gave you a feeling of being happy that you were there, you know, because they were knowledgeable, could tell you anything you needed to know about the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Grant?
I'll just add one more comment to that, and I think it all kind of boiled down to pride, and community pride. So, everybody in, that worked downtown, had a huge community pride. The city had a huge community pride. So, whether it was, whether you're a city employee or working for a private company, you felt that you were proud to be there and proud to be a part of something, and it showed intentionally throughout the whole entire city, whether it was the wayfinding, whether we're talking about the landscaping. Everything was very, very intentional. The city was branded very well, and it all went back to, "We are proud of what we've done, and we're proud of our accomplishment." And the city took pride in their assets, and they took care of their assets. There wasn't a single city asset that needed attention, because everybody took care of their assets.
Ms. Grant, I would say, a big takeaway for me with the aesthetics was, it felt like a destination. And so, Mayor Glover, you said, you know, "They don't have the ocean there," but there were times, like, we were sitting out to eat dinner outside, or if I was walking, did some strolls by myself and with a group, I felt like it was a similar feeling that you get when you've arrived somewhere, at the ocean, or at a mountain, or something spectacular. And I'm sitting there like, I can't put my finger on what it is. But as a self-proclaimed horticulturalist, I love plants, it was one big garden, you know, and that's just one component of it. But, you know, looking at every nook and cranny, where most cities would simply have blank space, they had plants there. And I also noticed that these plants, they were usually native, they were usually hardy, easy to maintain. So, they didn't try to do, they didn't try to make it something that they're not. They leaned into what works there, and it looked beautiful.
Yeah, that's a good segue into the next section, which is about destinations and anchors. Mayor Glover shared that from the book, their guiding vision was to make downtown everyone's neighborhood. And they point out that one of the keys to that is, you got to have things downtown that want to draw everybody into the downtown, something for everybody. And so, when they started 30 years ago, they didn't have much in the way of destinations in their downtown. Since then, they've added the Peace Center, which is their performing arts center, Unity Park, and there are actually a couple of other parks that they were in the process of redoing while we were there. Mass General Store, and we'll talk about that when we get to retail, but Mass General Store is the LL Bean of the South, and they attracted that business as an anchor business along their Main Street. And so, the ability to create those destinations, to make downtown feel like a destination worth visiting, was a key to their success. So, with that as a prelude, your comments, please, on destinations and anchors. What did you see? Mr. Brown?
I actually would like to share some information that I talked about in the EDA meeting today about some of the destinations and anchors in Greensville. And these, in particular, are event centers, convention centers and event centers. So, in Greensville, you have the Peace Center, which he talked about as being a destination. The Peace Center has a $46 million economic impact on the City of Greensville. Following the Peace Center, you have the Bon Secours Wellness Arena. That has an $875 million economic impact on the City of Greensville. Following that, you have Floor Field, where the Cheap Hot Dogs and the Lousy Baseball Team. They have a $34 million economic impact on the city. And then, last but not least, you have the Greensville Convention Center, which has a $300 million economic impact on the city. So, those five facilities, excuse me, four facilities combined, for a total of $1,255 million economic impact on the City of Greensville. And the thing that we lack in Portsmouth is an entertainment venue, a convention center. So, that's one of the things that I took away from the destinations and anchors there.
Thank you. Okay, and so then, the next area is retail. And I'm actually going to ask the mayor to share the Mass General Store story, because he and Mayor White had a conversation about how they were able to attract Mass, and then also, the mayor shared some other retail tips. So, Mayor Glover, could you share what you heard from Mayor White, please?
So, real quick, I was really amazed by this general store, and I've always talked about having a real general store in the City of Portsmouth. I don't know if you know what a general store is, but it's basically a store with a lot of different merchandise that meets the needs of different demographics. It's a candy store. It's a store with outdoor apparel. It's a store with clothing for women and men, and children, and shoes. So, it's kind of like your old, you know, store that you go into. When I was a kid, you could shop there and just get about everything that you needed. So, Mass General Store, when Greenville was doing its renovation, Mayor White contacted Mass General Store. They were a store that came out of South Carolina originally. They were located primarily on the shore. It was a very popular program and a product. It was a family-owned business. In the book, when he first contacted Mass General Store, they said they weren't interested. They have a very high-level product in terms of people wanting to be a part of it. So, as time would have it, as they started improving downtown, he gave them a call again. And they said, "Well, we're going to come out and visit this time." And lo and behold, the very store that he had introduced them to when he originally talked about it, they ended up signing the contract to bring Mass General Store to Greenville, South Carolina that day. I will tell you, I was so excited about it, that I contacted Mass General Store. Look them up. They have a store in Roanoke, Virginia. They're in the state of Virginia. So, when I called the gentleman, the development man for Mass General Store, he returned my call. He said, "Mayor, right now, our plans are not to come to the eastern part of Virginia, but when we decide to come, we're going to come look at Portsmouth. It could potentially be a great opportunity." But the other side of retail, one of the things I asked the mayor was, you know, "How did you begin this renaissance in retail?" He said, "Mayor, I'm going to tell you how we did it. We started with lady retail." He said, "The ladies liked to shop. So, you bring down retail, upscale in all levels of retail, to introduce to the ladies, and that will bring every other good thing you want in retail." Now, I didn't make it up, but I suspect that there's a lot of truth to it, and so, that was one of the takeaways that I had. And if you go to Greenville, a number of their stores now, they attract high-end female retail with no problem. And it's kind of like that story where they say, "Build it, and they will come." Well, I intend, and I think we have a great opportunity, to build something very similar and bring back retail for everyone here in our downtown corridor. Thank you.
And so, now over to the rest of you. What did you see on the retail side that was intriguing to you?
I'll piggyback on Mass General real quick. I like the fact that it was an employee-owned organization.
It was.
Employees took a lot of pride in it, they took a lot of pride in the store and the maintenance of the store, and being knowledgeable employees, because they owned, they actually owned the company themselves.
It's true.
Mr. Harmon?
Looking on Main Street, they had a very large list of coveted retailers, retailers that follow each other. For example, they had Anthropology. Anthropology is owned by Urban Outfitters. When you get Urban Outfitters, you get Anthropology. You also may get Free People. They had all three within downtown Greenville. Their shopping is also supported by their large college community, which brings in college students that are constantly buying and whatnot, and staying on trend. So, that was very evident in downtown Greenville. The Mass General Store looked like something that could be on High Street right now. It looked like the landscape. It didn't look like it was not attainable for us to get. There was a mix. It wasn't just retailers for one demographic. It was retailers for everyone. There's also restaurants and shops, the same way for that. It all supported the common goal of a thriving downtown area, inclusive to everyone.
Thank you.
Ms. Grant?
I think one of the takeaways for me with the retail, and the retail was excellent, being a woman, I will say, yes, it was very good retail, is the walkability of the downtown and the draw to walk. So, again, like we talked about, their parking garages were off of Main Street. Main Street wasn't the main place to park. Main Street was the main place to walk, stroll, and enjoy. So, I think, you know, rethinking that and looking at making it more walkable, making it inviting, safe, warm, a place that you want to stay, spend time, the more time you spend, the more shops you'll go in versus parking, running in, leaving. And so, they drew people and then invited them to stay just through the aesthetics and the walkability, which then you tend to purchase more.
It's true. Mr. Grant?
Piggybacking off of what Michelle said, it's an experience. So, any one of those shoppers that we saw, including ourselves, could shop on Amazon or anywhere online, or go out into the county and go to the big box retail. But, it's better in Greenville, it's better to experience buying the same thing that you could get somewhere else, but buy it down there, and then walk, go down to the river, experience the lights. I mean, like what the vice mayor was saying, it was, you just saw so many people coming out, and you just wanted to be a part of it, and you're going to end up buying something. So, I think it's the experience.
And they actually, real quick, they had a Brooks Brothers downtown. I like Brooks Brothers. They also had a grocery store, Publix Grocery Store, and they had a CVS Pharmacy.
And I think the key to all of that was getting the density downtown to attract those kind of anchor businesses. Vice Mayor?
I think it's important to note, too, that parking on the Main Street was pretty much free. They had a few two-hour areas, but the mayor said, "Hey, if somebody's there for two and a half hours, we don't mark the tires or, you know, put a ticket on their car." But they thought that that was conducive, and they got the return on investment by, obviously, people spending money in the shops. And that diagonal parking, as was mentioned earlier, I think that was real retail shopping-friendly too, in that you got more cars in a smaller space.
I want to speak to the density again, piggybacking off of him. Greensville actually has, within the walking distance, depends on your physical capability, but within the walking distance of Main Street, there are 129 places to shop, 183 cafes and bars, 19 hotels and lodging places, and 60 unique things to do within walking distance of there. So, it's a dense area with a lot of activities in it, but it still attracts a... I asked the mayor, he said there's an influx of people that comes in on Sunday, inexplicable. I asked him what was the reason for it. He couldn't even explain it. So, I did some poking around. Greensville has an airport, they have a lot of layovers on Sundays. So, maybe the people from the airport decided to come in and visit the city for a couple of hours and spend some dollars and go back to catch their plane. But there's a reason for the influx of people there, density there, and businesses there, because these anchors, these anchors that are attractions and event centers and draw people to the city, they also create jobs and boost the economy in Greensville. So, the anchors are good focal points.
Okay, and then the last area that we have to reflect on are community perceptions. So, again, when the planning group met, one of the things we talked about was the city manager mentioning that as they got started, they weren't only interested in attracting new development, they were interested in investing in the folks that had been there with them all along. And as was already mentioned, they have a training program, an ambassador training program, that extends to the businesses along their Main Street. So, everybody tells the Greenville story, and they have learned to tell the Greenville story the same way. And it's a positive story, not focusing on the negatives, but rather talking up their town. So, with those thoughts, over to the rest of you who attended, your perceptions about community perceptions.
So, let me start this too. I don't know if, how many of you seen the Jordan Peele movie Get Out? But it was an eerie feeling that so, everyone was so nice there, everyone was so proud of their city, everyone was so knowledgeable about things to do there and attractions there. It was almost like, are these real people? Like, they... They gave me an eerie feeling at first, but it was good. Ms. Sanders said they have an institute that actually trains their workers in the downtown area to be ambassadors of a sort, to be able to assist people like me as a visitor, showing me secret places, and talking to me about the mice scavenger hunt. And, you know, they just had so much knowledge of their city. And the mayor, who had been mayor for 35 years, he's very approachable, people was coming up to him and just talking to him in the middle of our tour, just coming up meeting, you know, just greeting them. The citizen has a lot, had a lot of pride in their area. You could tell it from their vernacular and the way they carry themselves, their soul.
Thank you.
Ms. Teresa?
I think one thing that impressed me about it was, a lot of these projects were long-term projects.
Yes.
And once they developed their vision, they stood on that vision. It didn't matter who came in and out of council, it didn't matter any of that. And I think a lot of that had to do with the community. They sold the community on the ideas of what this was going to look like. And so, it wasn't anything about, you know, "We're going to do this this time." They stood to the, they stood on the plan, and they kept moving forward with the plan.
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
And to speak of the plan, you would be surprised to know that their city council is composed of Republicans and Democrats. Now, I say that because, in spite of that, they stuck to the plan, and the council is unified in making sure during that period of growth and redevelopment, that there was continuity. As council members changed, the plan stayed. They remained committed to the plan. It didn't change every two years when their council changed. So, I think that's what really struck me. You know, if you're going to have a plan worth doing, it's got to be anchored in more of a foundation, so it can last beyond somebody's council term. So, I think that was extremely impressive.
And lastly, Greenville is supported by the neighboring counties within the metropolitan area. However, it is a known perception that Greenville is the hub for their arts, their culture in downtown. So, the other suburbs, the outlying counties, support that vision. Everyone kind of knows their niche, you know? So, that's something that we would have to come, overcome over here in Hampton Roads, where we have seven cities, you know, that all have their own vision, their own culture. And yes, we say regilism, but that's still something that we pose as a challenge across the seven cities. So, but in Greenville, there is a buy-in that Greenville is their hub, and the surrounding counties follow that vision.
On that note, something that the mayor said at the beginning, he said, "You hear that sound right there? You know, that's resembling the waterfall." So, when we're in Greenville, we could hear the waterfall, see the waterfall. The... Um, the, the mayor there said, uh, you've got to find your waterfall, you know, metaphorically. And so, you know, we have, we have our waterfall here, we have the water, we have Old Town. It's whatever makes this, uh, place unique. And so, yes, although we have seven cities, uh, there is a uniqueness to Portsmouth, there's a uniqueness to Old Town. And what I, uh, took back was, uh, you know, we need to lean into, uh, Old Town, we need to lean into what makes Portsmouth special, um, and that will be the magnet, uh, that brings folks from all over the region to, uh, uh, to live, work, and play in, uh, in Portsmouth and in Old Town.
Okay, I think that wraps up the reflections portion of the program. Uh, I want to thank all of you who shared your comments and again, uh, whatever you've written down, uh, please provide those back to me when we wrap up so we can collect, uh, your written down thoughts as well. And so now we're moving into, uh, key concepts and key concepts really is all about how did Greenville do what Greenville did? And for that conversation, we're going to turn it over to Stephen Carter, our city manager. Mr. Carter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, there are four issues that I want to talk about, uh, that can talk to the, the idea of how did Greenville do it? And then at the end, I'm going to go over, um, what I've listed as some additional ingredients, uh, that Greenville has implemented that we really have to make sure that we do also. But first, we're going to talk about culture and hospitality. A lot of you have mentioned, uh, the pride that it, it seemed the people in Greenville had for their own city. You know, one of the things that, um, I talked about when I first came to Portsmouth, and I still talk about is protecting the brand. There was nobody in Greenville that I met that said anything negative about Greenville. And that doesn't mean negative things not happening in Greenville. Let, let, I'll say it this way. I watched our interaction with Greenville. We, we went to Greenville thinking Greenville was a great place. So when we got to Greenville, no matter what we saw, we said Greenville was a great place. There were homeless people in Greenville. There's places that weren't so cool in Greenville. But our perception of what Greenville was outweighed anything that you saw negative, even trash on the street. I saw some trash on the street, but I hear people, man, this street is clean, that's easy trash. That's because you didn't look for trash on the street. You expected it to be clean. We have to change the expectation that people have when they come to Portsmouth. First of all, we got to change the expectation that Portsmouth has while they're in Portsmouth. They talked about how everybody was trained to have this unified message about what Greenville was. That's nothing special, we can do that. That's not, that's not even something hard to do, that, that's something that it just takes a little will to do. Because a lot of the things that we're, we talked about tonight, it's not that they're so monumental that we can't overcome them. But there was somebody that had the will to overcome, somebody that was willing to stick to it even when it didn't just go right the first time we tried it. We'll back up, figure out what went wrong, we'll try it again until we get it right. So that, culture is a major part in what made Greenville Greenville. And if we're going to do anything in Portsmouth, no matter how much money we can pour into it, no matter how many businesses we can try, if we don't do something about culture, then everything is for naught. We're going to convince people not to come to Portsmouth because of the way we do it. They had a, they had a mentality that we were a great place and we, we want to tell everybody we're a great place. That's one of the things that we need here in Portsmouth. Relationships and developers, their early efforts focused on existing relationships with people that were already there. I really can't convince other people to come to Portsmouth until I convince the people in Portsmouth that it's good to be in Portsmouth. Because when you start talking to other people, then you start convincing people that it's good to be in Portsmouth. So relationships matter. How you cultivate those relationships matter. And using the tools that we have already in front of us and not overlooking the things that make us special so that we can try to be special in some other way that we're not, there's some things that's pretty cool about Portsmouth. Let's make those things the center of what we do and ma- and build those great relationships with the people that's already working to make Portsmouth great. Philanthropy and corporate support, there's a lot of things that the city of Greenville does that support or make it an environment where things is good to happen. But let me tell you, with a city of 78,000, 79,000 people, the city of Greenville cannot tax these people enough to do all the things that they're doing in Greenville. There's no way possible for Greenville to tax their citizens enough to make those things that's happening in Greenville happen. It happened because there are other people that's willing to make investments in Greenville besides the city. The city, the city's job is to cultivate an area, cultivate some incentives that bring people there and make it a great place to do business. But we have to make sure that we're reaching out and using those relationships so that we can become a stronger group together and not individually. The final one I want to talk about is financing. Public-private partnerships, we've talked about that a lot this evening. They use a lot of different ways of finance. They talked about these TIFs where they're kind of do these self-imposed taxes, they talk about hospitality taxes, they talked about corporate partners that was willing to do some things for, they did so, general obligation bonds, they did a lot of different things to make Greenville what Greenville is. So it's not one single magic bullet that's going to work for us. That means we got to look at what our landscape is and figure out the things that we can do best and take advantages of the things that we have available to us. My final piece of this is that piece I talked to you about, those additional ingredients that Greenville used that we're going to have to do some work to strengthen. We talked a little bit about, for decades, Greenville, well, I take that back, the mayor kind of hung out through all of this, all right? But it had different council members, it had different city managers, it had different people in their communities that came and went. But through it all, they maintained the course. Different people then changed the process so much that it derailed everything that was trying, that, that Greenville was trying to have, have happen. Greenville figured out a good plan and they figured out good people to keep making that plan go forward. Another thing that I want us to think seriously about is a downtown management authority. They created some really strong partnerships, they have what they call the Downtown Greenville Partnership. All right? Later it became the Downtown Development Authority. But that group is dedicated to making downtown thrive. What we have right now is management that's kind of spread across several, um, city departments, everybody's got a little piece in it, uh, but we don't have a real quarterback for our downtown, somebody who's just looking out for downtown for the best interest of our entire city. Consistent branding and storytelling, you guys talked about that, how everybody in the city, they, they told the same story. They, they had it rehearsed to the point where it became second nature. When they ask something, when you ask something about it, they had a ready answer, how Greenville is the right place to be, why, where, why Greenville is the right place to visit, why Greenville is the right place to spend your money? Programming and events. When I had the phone call with the mayor, separate from our visit, one of the things they talked about, she talked about really, was they do a lot of activities in their downtown. They have a lot of weekly events, they have festivals, they have seasonal programming. So these, they give people a reason to return to downtown often and not do the exact same thing they saw the last time they were in downtown. You got to give them some variety so they can come back and want to see what's happening the next time. We host the events, but we're kind of disjointed with our events. We don't really have a really great schedule of events, especially that just happened in our downtown. We got things that happen around our downtown, we have some things that happen in our downtown, but we don't really have a focused downtown development authority that really makes sure that there's great events happening in our downtown all the time. This is one, risk tolerant private development. Early developers in Greenville was willing to take some risk, often supported by modest city incentives, but over time, that risk was rewarded with, uh, profitability. Many of our developers right now, they may cautious about making, uh, investments in our downtown, or making investments in Portsmouth, perceiving Portsmouth as a high risk instead of something that is really valuable and, and, and worthy of their investment. We need to put together a strategy to reduce that developer risk. What, when you, when you think something is risky, whether or not it's risky, it's still risky to you. So we need to put together a strategy that elevates Portsmouth as a complementary, not a secondary, regional destination. The final thing I want to talk about is buy-in and trust. Everybody we talked to was bought into the idea that Greenville was a great place. Everybody we talked to was bought into the idea that Greenville was a great place. Matter of fact, you bought into the idea that Greenville was a great place. We can do that also because Portsmouth is a great place. I'm only in Portsmouth because I want to be in Portsmouth. We need more people that, that really think about Portsmouth the way that I think about Portsmouth. I believe I love Portsmouth a lot, a lot more than people that, that was born and raised in Portsmouth. The time that I've been in Portsmouth, one thing I can guarantee is, you've never heard me say a bad word about Portsmouth. And I know the bad places, I know the bad things, all right? But that's not make Portsmouth a bad place, that make Portsmouth just like everybody else, just like Greenville. If we can buy in, we can use our own identity, we can stay with that strong protect the brand mentality, we can have a unified vision regardless of who sits in the seat, we can have the exact same thing that Greenville has. That's my piece. Thank you for your time.
Wow, Coach put me in. Back to you, Mr.
Are you a mayor?
No, no, you know, thank you, Mr. Carter. That was, that was really passionate, man, and I could, I could definitely feel it. But, uh, in, in summary of, of what we discussed, I want to just, I, I like sharing observations because I'm not that smart and I think when you share observations, um, you create a visual picture. So I want to read something to you that's again in the booklet, it's about what the mayor had to say. And it's appropriate to how we're going to kind of close this out. This is in his own words, he said, "In 1997, we needed a new roadmap for downtown development. I felt that too many bad decisions were being made. The city was still too reactive instead of proactive." LDR, which is their Land Development Research Group and their consultant that they had brought in, gave us a snapshot of what we were doing right and what we were doing wrong and some very specific advice on what we must do next to have a truly great downtown. We needed to focus on mixed use, especially residential and retail. Downtown needed elements of personality such as public art, fountains, I like fountains, y'all, I like fountains. In addition to that, other things to enhance the pedestrian experience. Think about our downtown, and I, I want to be, I want honest feedback. Do you feel like our downtown really has a personality other than Old Town? When we talk about our downtown, we say Old Town, I was meeting with a group today. I said, yeah, you know, Portsmouth was founded in 1752, chartered in 1858, we have one of the oldest historic downtowns in America and, and, and I certainly pointed out to our maritime and our other stuff and that we're on the water, but do we really have a personality that we can all really rally behind? That's something to think about. In addition to that, we need a major attraction, a major attraction. Think about that. And in 1977, he says, "We had very few of these things." So we're not unique. The man is telling you right here, they had very few. And even achieving a major attraction seemed too impossible at the time, too impossible. That doesn't sound real optimistic. That, of course, would be the restoration of the Reedy Falls River and the development along the river. The best part is that everything we did was authentically Greenville, building on our unique assets. Digest that for a minute. What are we doing to authentically sell our city or make our city better? And most importantly, what are our unique assets that we can focus on? And I submit to you, we can't do it all at one time, but we can do something. So in understanding that, I'll go back to what I shared with you in the beginning. We as a community will become what we think about and what we're willing to focus on and build together. That's all of us in this room. And our next steps as we go forward and we wrap it up with some other questions and, and share some ideas, is we want to engage the community, the boards and commissions, the civic leagues, we want to engage our religious institutions, our support public art organization. Thank you, John, for you being here tonight. That is how we will begin to turn the corner. This is an all-in game. Remember we said in the document and in the vision and in the ideas, we want to make our downtown everyone's neighborhood? And guess what? From what I understand, if I buy into that and I want downtown to be like my neighborhood and your neighborhood and your neighborhood, then I want what's best for downtown and the rest of our city. Is that fair? The other thing is we want to also make sure the vision that we have aligns with our council priorities and what the citizens of this city can get behind. Very critical. And I got to say, you know, outside of last year when we had our first retreat under Mr. Carter, we weren't real clear as a body on our vision. I don't know that our EDA and everybody else, I know you guys have done amazing work, but as a group, did we have a vision, really? That we were all dialed in on? Did we have one major thing we wanted to succeed at to show the people of this city that we can get something done? Those are real questions. In addition to that, we want to set some near-term goals, some things we can do right now. As you all are aware, one of the things that council had proposed and that's been on the table for a couple of years now, this is an example, the Roundabout. How many of you know what the pro, what, 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 what the vision is for the Roundabout right next to the pavilion? Do you all know what it is? Have you seen a picture of what it's going to look like? Well, I'll tell you and then we'll send out the picture to everyone. So that Roundabout will be one of our first fountains in the city of Portsmouth. It will be a destination. Why will it be a destination, Mayor? Because many of you who grew up here, you remember Willet Hall, right? Anybody remember the dancer statue outside of Willet Hall? Can, can I get some participation here, y'all? Come on, y'all, help me out. Okay, so what the plan was, we're going to beautify that Roundabout, make water shoot up, but guess what's going to be in the middle of that Roundabout? That statue. That statue. And it's going to happen. And it's going to happen before the year is over. But, ain't that right, Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter said it's going to happen, not about 40 years. But, but the point I'm trying to make is by doing something that we've never done before and transforming the mindset of some of these folks who are the naysayers, and I call affectionately the grievance group, they always want to talk about what Portsmouth isn't, what Portsmouth can't do, but you know what? I can tell you from where I sit, Portsmouth is a dynamic city on the move. And as I said in my State of the City, this is a city where, where that moves you. But the But the most important thing, y'all, we've got to do the movement. We've got to get people engaged and involved and we've got to show them something. Because once we show them something, they're going to believe it. I'll tell you the next big thing that's going to happen that we're going to show them. And Mr. Carter has informed me that this is going to take place in the first quarter of 2026. You know that jail and that whole complex that's been there for too long? We're going to implode that whole complex. And what we're going to do is the plan is when we implode it, we're going to have a party. We're going to invite everybody in the city of Portsmouth. And we go, we're going to have a party, we're going to celebrate, but what we're going to create is a new hope and a new vision for what can happen. Is that true, Mr. Carter? Am I saying something out of turn here? Okay. The jailbreak. Okay. I don't know if we're going to call it that. We, we got a marketing team here. We can come up probably with a better name. But in any event, we need to come away from here with let's do something short-term. I just shared a couple ideas with you. But this isn't all in some game and we all need to share our ideas. There's no wrong idea. We need to talk to one another, build those relationships. We, each and every one of us in this room, I consider an ambassador. You came here tonight because you care, not just about what Portsmouth is, but where Portsmouth is going. So we're going, we're going to set up some, some goals here for our next steps. We're going to communicate that out to everyone who is here. We don't have that set. But the most important thing that we need to do is deliver. I've been in this seat for five years and what I can tell you that I don't like to hear is you know what? Portsmouth just does a lot of talking and they never get anything done. Well, I submit to you, and I'm making a commitment to you, that ladies and gentlemen, we're here to get stuff done and to make our city the best city that we can possibly make it. And the, 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 the most important thing that we will get from that is everyone will see, because they already know we're headed that way. They'll see and they'll come and they'll enjoy everything that we've created together. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for attending tonight. Was this good? Was this helpful? And, and, and I want to thank, uh, once again, all of those who put this work together. And I can't say enough about our city clerk there, you know? She was responsible for organizing the whole trip to Greenville and it was done with such precision that we had no hiccups for the most part. And we've got to give credit where credit is due. Deborah White is, is, is the glue that keeps, keeps us straight. And so Ms. White, I'm, I'm giving you your praise right now. I know you're not asking for it. So thank you again and please share your ideas, your information, uh, but most importantly, continue to be engaged and involved in making Portsmouth the best city we can make it. That concludes our discussion unless anyone has something else.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Liz, go ahead.
Make a PSA and plug. Um, so Portsmouth Partnership has been working with various city departments as well as many of the organizations in the room tonight pursuing Main Street accreditation. And we are in the middle of our community-based survey. So we're one of 11 cities that are currently surveying, um, their citizens to see how they are currently using their downtown and how they would like to envision using their downtown. And I just wanted to take a moment to plug that. We have some QR codes here. This is an opportunity to just gain some data that can inform the work that this group will be doing as well as our Main Street group will be doing.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll get that to, to a marketing director, I'm sure. Anyone else in closing remarks? The floor is open. Don't be shy. Mr. Harmon?
I would encourage all of us at this table and everyone that came out tonight to, um, as we toured Greenville and, and looked at what they have and to bring back those ideas, we can begin doing our own tour of our own area of downtown Portsmouth on our own and talking to our local businesses and merchants and retailers to see what they want to see in their downtown as well for their buy-in. Because they've been here through thick and thin and many of them have been standing in peril times and they're still here. And they're a beautiful part of our tapestry that we call our business community. So I would highly encourage us to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Anyone else? Thank you. That concludes our meeting. Drive safe.